Couldn't find a pen this afternoon.
And Donna? Donna? I didn't get one of these. That's okay. That's all right.
Don't worry. We've got it brought out here.
Oh. Good evening, everyone. It's the Lurington Planning Board for Monday, May 6th. Thanks. That's okay.
That's what I was just gonna ask. Is Bob gonna be here?
Oh, no. He had his surgery. He might not be here tonight.
He had it a week and a half.
Well, he might not be there.
Right. He might be.
You think you might come in if I take this?
No. According to my agenda, we have Mr. Colby on for a public hearing with all my misspellings in it for 7:00. But I think maybe the public hearing that went in the paper might have said Mr. Bunting was on for 7:00. So I'm gonna ask the audience, if the people that are here, are you here for either one of those public hearings? If so, which one?
Uh, Colby.
Colby, Colby? And sir in the back? Are you here for Mr. Bunting or Mr. Colby?
I am Mr. Colby.
Now you got that figured out.
Woo, okay. So since you folks are here for Mr. Colby, we'll go first with Mr. Colby. So if you'd like to come up to the mic. Mr. Colby, you wanna come up to the mic? Sorry about that. So basically what it is, Mr. Colby is doing a three lot minus subdivision down on Christian Hill Road. And I think, Donna, I gave you all of the people that were on the sidewalk. Is that correct? I gave you the sidewalk.
I don't remember what I remember, Donna.
Want me to give it to you again? I'll give it to you again. It was myself, Grace, Victoria, and Pete.
In the second one, Bob showed up.
Yeah, in the second one, then it was all of us and Bob for the second one, for Mr. Bunting.
He was there for Bunting.
Yeah. So this is a public hearing for the three lot subdivision. I noticed Mr. Aland is not here. He probably thinks he's due at 7:15.
I think so.
Okay. So would you like to wait until he gets here? Because I certainly understand if you would.
Sure.
Okay. So I don't, is anyone here for Mr. Bunting other than Mr. Bunting himself?
He's in the first row.
I know.
Oh, well, yeah.
I see. I got that one. So I think what we're gonna do is go by what was in the paper. And I think, Mr. Bunting, you were advertised as being the first public hearing at 7:00. So if you just wanna get up and just give us a brief, even though we were there for the sidewalk.
We have a woodworking business, and we're growing and looking to expand from our original building to a farm building that we're turning into workshop.
And the only thing we'd asked you for was the designation of parking, which you gave to us tonight. And is there anyone who'd like to address Mr. Bunting, ask any questions, have any concerns, anything? No? Then I'll close the public hearing and ask if anybody on the board has any questions for Mr. Bunting. No? Then I will ask for a motion to approve Mr. Bunting's application for his workshop. Other than the standard notice of decision things that say you can't do anything if you're gonna lean against the property or something, are there any conditions that any of the board want to put on, like working hours or anything like that? I mean, what hours did you plan on functioning?
We have one employee who usually comes in between 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning, and everybody's gone at 4:00.
You really are pretty alone up there, if I will. You don't have that many buddies, so you're not gonna be bothering anyone.
I think I figured it on Google Earth, it said it's 360 feet from the road, and there isn't anybody closer than that.
Yeah. Did you plan to put a sign out?
No.
Okay. No sign. Okay. Anybody else got any questions or concerns? If not, is there a motion to approve Mr. Col, Mr. Bunting's workshop on Bill's Ridge Road?
I'll make a motion.
Victoria made the motion. Daryl seconded. All those in favor? So basically, what will happen within 10 days, I will write a notice of decision, which will be very basic. And it just says that you can go ahead and you coordinate with Craig on any issues that you might have.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we do have to wait a few minutes for anybody else who might wanna come to Mr. Colby's public hearing. So why don't we do the minutes of, yes, we did. Yeah. Yeah. Do the minutes of April 16th. Are those the last ones you got out to us, Donna, I believe?
Yeah. That was our last meeting.
Yeah. And I didn't have any corrections.
Only minor stuff?
Mm-hmm.
On the very first page, under "Others present," Michael is spelled wrong.
Others present, N-M-I-C-H-A-E-L.
E-L.
C-E-L.
C-E-L. And then, under "Public hearing for retail sale of sheds," at the end of that first paragraph, it says, "He will meet with the customer on site to design a shed and/or other details."
He said that while he was at the podium at the once.
So that's what, okay.
They wanted it like a special thing.
It just was a little, it just was worded a little weird, but maybe he just, maybe he just said it a little weird. I don't know. "He will meet with the customer on site to design a shed and/or discuss other details."
I thought they were gonna be already a pre-existing design that the customer would come look at them and decide which one they wanted.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah. So I don't think there's.
Well, it could be details of delivery.
He did say he would do some.
It could be other details for delivery, or who knows what. I think just to discuss other details would make good sense.
Yeah.
It was my understanding he was gonna show them to him, and then he was gonna go get it at the community and deliver it to his customer.
Right. But there wasn't gonna be any design involved. They were already designed and built. Yeah. So probably just take back the word.
I don't know. We can leave that out.
Yeah, it's pretty immaterial. But I leave it up to Grace. She's the one making the amendments.
He will meet with the customer on site to.
Why don't you take that sentence right out?
Okay. Because I think the rest of it explains it well.
Right. Exactly. The next sentence.
Anything else?
No, because everything else was clarified well with the questions and stuff below it.
In the other four pages?
I, nope. I have some.
Victoria?
The first page where you have all the questions listed, did you mean to put question marks after each one of those because they are questions?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay. I just.
But I will if you want them.
Where's that?
On the first page.
Oh, I see.
None of them have question marks.
I'll do that.
And then, on the last paragraph.
First page.
Yep. "Fully asked if any board member had questions." And you said there was none. That should be there were none.
I knew you were gonna catch that.
And then.
And you did.
Page two. The second paragraph under "conditional use permit." It says Thursday, April, you wanna put 25th TH just for consistency, because you have April 25th.
I would be glad to do that.
At the bottom with the TH. So I didn't know if you wanted consistency.
I'll do that.
And at the very bottom, July 17th TH.
Now, wait a minute. Do you have to put TH when you've got the year?
No, not when you don't have.
Well, you don't. But it's the, oh, I see. Oh, you're right.
You don't put the TH.
You're right. You don't have to put that one. Just the other two.
She does it sometimes and not others.
Now I can see on the other page.
Well, if she has the year after it, you don't put TH.
You don't. No.
It's only if you don't put the year.
Right. Right.
There are a few minutes of April 1st on page two on the break to the next page.
Okay.
Because it's dang on.
Yeah, well, that's immaterial. Okay.
Page three, under "Review minutes of April 1st, 2024," the second sentence in the first paragraph, "Fully ask the secretary to review all the discussions that took place on." You wanna put the gravel.
Where are you again?
Second, first paragraph under "Review minutes," at the top of the page.
What's your age?
Three. Page three? Okay. Second sentence starts with, "Fully ask," okay. "Fully ask the secretary to review all the discussion that took place on the gravel extraction ordinance."
I took the V out.
Oh.
Because the automatic stuff that came out didn't want the V in there.
Oh.
I don't know if that's, it didn't like it anywhere. But I'll put it there.
Okay. And again, on the wording of planning board reference questions, those were all questions. I didn't know if you wanted to put question marks. It's fine if you don't. I just.
What paragraph?
No, no, no. That's just, no, no, no.
Okay. Okay.
That's how, no. That's how it's worded and goes to padding.
No, it's fine. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
And everything else is fine?
I do have one correction at the top of page three.
Yeah?
The very last sentence, we have in italics, "Tiny homes do not have wheels and do not include a trailer, semi-trailer, et cetera." Don't say et cetera. Say everything.
You don't like that?
No, no. I mean, when someone goes back to read these minutes, a year from now, two years from now, they're not gonna know what you're talking about. So the words should be after semi-trailer, camp trailer, comma, recreational vehicle, or manufactured housing. And that gives you the complete, correct wording for that particular sentence.
I can do that.
Any other corrections? If not, is there a motion to accept the minutes of April 16th as amended?
A motion, we accept them as amended.
Any second? Pete seconded. All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. It's 7:15. We're pretty much there. All right. It's, well, they're having a little conversation up there. We'll just wait a minute. So anytime, Mr. Aland, are you guys ready? I mean, if you need to finish up some conversation, that's okay.
I finally made it.
You made it and on time. No problem.
Will we have a public hearing today?
Yep. There are two people here.
You want me to address?
Sure.
I'll hand you guys our cup. You see? Look along. Sorry, I'm a little late. Took me a while to get my plotter to work, but I kept plotting my contours in a color, like a little purple lavender color. And the register doesn't like colors. I just happened to walk up there. Hey, my name's Mike Aland of Land survey. Steve Colby.
Can you put some, yeah, can you put some mic around so you can talk into it with mic? Only because people out in TV land need to hear what you're saying.
So I'm Mike Aland of Land Survey. Steve Colby owns a property. It's 10.8 acres. He has sold out one lot here. So what he is proposing on doing is making a building lot here and here, sort of kind of on top of the hill. So it's two lots that have 120,000 square feet, so they need the town ordinances. And the lot down here, he's just gonna have to retain it because it's not quite big enough to be allowed to be a buildable lot. So it's on Christian Hill Road. It's only about 600 feet that way to Route 25 or Ospey Trail. And this way, it's like 4/10ths of a mile or two, Cape Road or Route 117. So test pits have done, been done. I surveyed the whole thing, and I still need to set the pins out there.
So what arrangements have you made with the fire chief about a cistern or a dry hydrant or whatever?
Steve was trying to get hold of the fire chief. I don't know if you had any luck with that.
He's here.
He's here. You want him to speak?
Yeah. If he wants.
So the day of your sidewalk, I met with him briefly before and explained what the current ordinance reads, that there has to be a water supply within 500 feet of the principal structure. That could be a cistern if there isn't already an existing water supply. There is the brook right down the street, might actually be right on his property border. I'm not sure. But as long as that supplies enough water, all he has to do is put in a dry hydrant, a hydrant head, which I think is the most cost-effective, easiest to maintain, and easiest to install. Just have to make sure that there's sufficient water there.
Okay. And so I assume, Mr. Colby and Mr. Aland, you'll wanna talk together to decide before you come in finally?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay.
He can probably do a fire pond in there, so that little stream will feed into the pond, and then I'll have, he wants like 15,000 gallon he was talking about for a cistern.
Okay.
Right.
I'm sure that's gonna be the same for a fire pond, too.
Yeah. And part of his land's pretty wet there anyway, right? That's why you can't use that. So, yeah, if he were to dig a pond there, as long as the brook can feed that, by my opinion, that's great.
Okay. All right.
Joyce?
Yes.
I thought last year, the board decided not to allow those dry wells again.
I think they're still allowed in the ordinance. I'll take, correct me if I'm wrong.
What was discussed was removing ponds that don't have a supply. So it all goes back to Danielle Drive. They dug a pond to collect water. But there's nothing that feeds it unless there's runoff. And so it tends to dry up or get below where the strainer is for that hydrant. So all I pushed for was to make sure that whatever that source is has a supply to it. So it could be an existing brook or body of water, or if there's a way to feed a pond once it's been dug, that's sufficient.
Okay. Any other questions? Craig? And it's done?
How would you know if the brook will feed it? How would you, how would you find that out?
Who wants to answer? If you wanna go back to the mic, please, so that any.
So this is where that stream is right here. I showed it on here.
But you need to go, you know, I know the mic is kind of a pain, but we do have to be aware of people sitting out in the audience.
I can talk a little louder.
Thanks.
Yeah, the stream is right at the corner of the parcel way down on the right-hand side. And part of that back is all wet. It's just like, when I had to find the pin in the back corner, it's like going over all these channels and stuff. So it's all wet in that area. So he'd, we'd have to check with DEP to see what's allowed. But there's dry land, so if he has to, he can make a pond in the dry land and then have a culvert or ditch going to where the brook is at that same elevation. So when the water's there, it's gonna fill the pond. That's what we found really works best. If you, if you dig a pond that the stream is coming straight into, the sediment will fill that pond up and probably, it's quick. It's 10 years, that pond will be all full of sediment. So it always works good if you have a stream, and then you either have a culvert going back a little bit from the direction of the stream, and then have the pond, whatever water's there goes through the culvert into the pond. So that always works good.
That brook have fishing?
Huh?
Does that brook have fishing?
I don't know. I haven't had a chance to fish in the last three years, so not.
A lot of restrictions on a brook that has fishing.
It's only probably a couple feet wide, but it is gravel bottom, so that says that it runs. So in DEP's eyes, I think it'd be considered a stream that you'd have to be set back from. So it's, it's big enough for DEP to say, "Don't get near it." So, and I, then we'll have to check with DEP. I think they did have some rules that they allowed a fire pond without going through too much of a hassle, but I think they're tightening up on that now within the last five years. But even you can disturb 1/10th of an acre of wetlands with a permit by rule with DEP. So, you know, they can, so that's like 4,000.
4,000 square feet, yeah.
4,350, so. So we gotta check with DEP, too, to see what we can do.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got plenty of time.
So how do you check to see if the water, if the brook runs enough during the summer months to feed any pond?
Well, we can talk to some neighbors that are there and see, you know, how that's been, if they notice it drives right up or, but like I said, there's a big area in the back that's all wetland, so that all stays pretty wet. So any water seeping through the ground's gonna, I think, keep that pretty good.
But you're gonna have two feet of water just to stop pumping, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The screener will come out, you're gonna have clearance, you're gonna pull it in.
Yeah, I've been on the fire department 45 years, so used to dealing with it. And, you know, the pond's probably gonna be.
So you stake your reputation on that, that brook will feed that pond, and it'll let it go?
If it doesn't, I'll take somebody's hose and I'll put it in the stream. I think it, we'll, we'll look and see, you know, you know, if there's anybody that really has some history on it, even the road commissioner, if he, you know, deals with it and knows anything about it, so.
So did you look to see what the state rates at?
No. We hadn't heard back from the fire chief, so we didn't know if he was gonna require anything.
So you really don't even know if you can touch it?
You can put in a pond, and it's just how much.
I mean the brook. I mean the brook. If it's a trout brook, you obviously can't change the height of it, so.
No, we're not changing the height of it.
Well, you would if you took too much water out of it.
No, we're gonna, well, do the pond off to the side, and then have a ditch or a culvert going to where the brook is.
I understand that.
So when the brook is at this level, it'll feed down into the pond. So it's not even gonna be near the brook, you know.
So if it drops down below that level, it can't feed the pond at all?
Right. That would mean the brook goes dry. So we just gotta see if it, I mean, I don't know what the other solution is, is you could put in tanks down there. But from anything I've seen with towns that are starting, or at least five years ago, don't want them because it's maintenance and they dry out. So they don't like the cisterns in a lot of towns.
Any other questions? So we have a rather lengthy period of time in which you have to come back with your final plan. And you have basically six months. So what you would do once you've gotten all your information and your final design, it would show the driveways and et cetera. You would come, get in touch with Craig and set an appointment to come up.
Steve has talked to the road.
You know what? I forgot to ask.
Oh, yeah.
I will ask after you finish. I'll wait for you.
Steve has talked to the road commissioner, and he's approved a couple places for the, for the driveways.
Driving?
For the driveways.
Oh, good. Okay.
And I took a look, and from down here, you can see up like 600 feet.
Okay.
People go 60, so that'd be good. The further you can see, the better.
So this being a public hearing, did anyone want to speak to this, to ask any questions or make any comment or anything like that? Either one of you?
I'm gonna just introduce myself.
If you'd like to go to the mic, please. Yes. Hi.
I'm Julian Butler, I live at thirty-eight Christian Hill Road, right across from the top lot that they're, they're subdividing there.
He's the middle one right here, the last lot, furthest to the right-hand one, he can do it, he's on these two.
Okay, okay.
So it's one down on the bottom of the hill, it's next to level.
I'm at the top, top of the hill, thirty-eight Christian.
Up here?
Yes, yeah. It's right after the, the bend.
Oh, that's Brent Johnson, okay. Yeah, you're right here, Julian, yeah, okay. Okay, so he's on the other side of the road, across from lot one, from here to here is his land.
That's Henry Colby's old house?
The one that Joe actually built the house, yeah, it was his, his land, yeah, yeah. And I, I'm kinda here just to try to figure out, we saw surveyors across the street, saw the letter for a subdivision, you know, this is my first time owning a home and having this kind of thing happen, so we just kinda wanted to see what, what the plan was and try to figure out what the, the lots look like.
Sure.
What was coming in right across the street from us.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's kinda why we're here, and also kinda wanted to highlight kind of the traffic on the road, since there has been a lot of houses that have come in on Christian Hill since I moved in about four or five years ago. It's been kinda crazy. We got, I've actually, we got a radar gun and have clocked people going over fifty miles per hour on our road, and, you know, I've, I have cameras and things that, that watch that, but I'm just kind of hoping that this subdivision adding some more houses on there, bringing some more people in doesn't affect that, too, and possibly figure out ways to kind of help with the traffic on the road. Yeah, and just, just wanted to introduce myself and figure out what was going on, so. Thanks, guys.
Donna, did you get the young man's name?
Joey Butler's what I wrote down.
Julian, yeah, it's, it should be right on the map.
Right on the map, Julian Butler.
Right across from lot one, this, over on this.
Just have a copy here.
As far as, it's unfortunate that there's, I live on a connector road, and, and Christian Hill is like a connection road, and people do go outrageously fast, and I'm empathetic to that for sure. Unfortunately, we do not have a police force in town, we're still pretty rural, and to be very honest with you, I don't think you can look to that source for, unless they do an occasional speed trap kind of thing to reinforce it, but we will definitely address it to the best of our ability.
That's more of an enforcement thing, anyway. That's an enforcement thing, there's nothing the planning board can do about that.
We should put potholes in this.
Oh, yeah.
You can cause a lot of accidents if you put a few cones in.
So, are there any other questions or concerns? Okay. So I don't believe a vote is required at this point, not until your final plan comes in.
What's required?
Not, there's no vote required tonight, it's just a matter of having you hear what, what's being spoken of here.
You could accept the preliminary plan and then show it, and then.
And then the final plan will be coming, you have a six-month timeframe to do that. Okay. Is, is, is there a motion to accept the preliminary plan for, I forget the name of it, do you have a name for this?
Yeah.
Brookview Estates, with the understanding that within six months, they come back with a final plan. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll motion that we accept the preliminary plan for Brookview Estates.
Is there a second?
A second?
Victoria's second. All in favor? Okay, that was pretty simple tonight, we appreciate it, and thank you for coming in. You saw in your packet that we need to talk about the upcoming ordinance referendum questions that will be coming up in June. There are going to be five questions, and they, I submitted them, basically what happens when, when there are referendum questions, it's a pretty simple sentence that's put up for the voters to read. As an example, the first rec, referendum question will read, "Shall amendments to the ordinance entitled zoning ordinance be enacted?" Now, basically, that tells the voter very little, if anything. So, but the language, the full and complete language is available for anyone to review, excuse me, at town hall. What we are planning to do this year, and hopefully to make it easier for the voters to understand, is we've developed some bullet points, and each referendum question will have, as an example, the zoning ordinance one, shall we, has four bullet points. And I'm gonna read them, I'm gonna read through these, and we're gonna keep addressing this issue every meeting until we vote. We're going to put these into, with the board's approval, into the shopper's guide, excuse me. It has been suggested we put them on Facebook page, they will be posted in the voting booths, there will be a bundle of them on the table when people come in, that they can take them. It's not legal for the ladies who hand out the actual ballots to hand these out because it's like influencing. Of course, we would like to influence everybody in a positive way, but legally, they are not allowed to hand out that type of thing. So I spoke with Patty today about the possibility of some of us standing, you know, by the table handing them out, and I'm not even, I don't think we can do that, so we're just trying to get as much of this information out so people understand, and will, if they have any questions, call any planning board member with the questions. There will be a select board informational meeting in a couple of weeks, I, I'm not gonna quote today because I don't know it exactly, but it's on their Thursday night meeting, I think it's the last, might be the last Thursday night of the month. But they've been very supportive, and last week, they even went through these, Jason went through these himself, so I think I'm gonna postpone this because I see Luke came in, and he has a, a cistern plan here that we need to discuss, and I did tell him to come in at seven-thirty, but we will go back to these bullet points as soon as we get through talking with Mr. Taylor about his submission for the completion of the cistern on Taylor Road. So Luke, do you or your engineer or whoever want to go to the mic?
Yeah.
And where did the fire chief go?
He's out walking the door.
Okay.
I can still see him.
Yeah.
But he can't hear.
Yeah. Yeah, Luke's gonna.
Yeah, he's, he's stuck in there, he's on the phone call, he's gonna come up and get the second.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Now, he's seen the plan, so if you wanna just go ahead and tell us who your engineer is, what you've done, et cetera.
So, it was Ian Riley?
Yeah. Mr. Riley can speak if he'd like, if it's easier for him to.
Yeah, yeah.
Explain what's going on. If you'd like to go to the mic, Mr. Riley.
Sure, actually, my name's Pete.
Pete?
Yeah, I did, I did the drawing, Ian was the, he was, he certified it.
Okay, so, so your name is what, Pete what?
Pete Deleba.
Can you spell that, please?
D-E-L-L-E-R-B-A.
Okay.
So, the.
First name?
Pete.
Pete, yeah.
So, just to get this clear, you're not the engineer, you're, you're.
I, I did the layout, I did the drawing.
Yeah, but you're not a professional?
I did not certify this.
Okay, but my question, what is your title? Are you an engineer, or are you a?
Yes, I'm an engineer.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
But you're not.
I'm the engineer, I'm the engineer that did the drawing, and then I had, I had Ian certify it.
He had to certify, okay.
Yeah.
Where is the company?
And are you with PhD associate?
That's my company.
Okay. So you own the company?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where is that?
Pardon?
Where is that?
Where are you physically?
Based out of Saco.
Okay, all right, enough, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so just working with the town, with Craig and, and the fire chief to just get the layout according, not only to code, but also to some of the preferences that you, that you folks had as far as the infill pipe height, location, and the entrance for the, for the tank fill, just making sure that we had proper insulation to prevent, for frost prevention. The, the cistern, the current, the current sixteen thousand gallon cistern, which was also certified, the, the cut sheets for the precast are in that packet as well, they were certified as well. So it's currently sitting where it is as far as the elevation, we're gonna go ahead and just get the fill as you see here, at least three feet below, so it'll be at least three feet below grade, we've got the two inches of the green board, which is like a foam board, covering for additional insulation.
So the foam board will be on top of the cistern?
It currently is, correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that sufficient strength and, what, substance to, to last for any length of time? A foam board doesn't sound like much to me.
It's, it's, it's not structural, it's for insulation, it adds, it adds R-value.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
So it adds insulation.
Okay, so then there would be a.
To prevent, to prevent for frost.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So is that three?
Pardon?
What's your R-value?
What is the R-value, he asked?
Ten.
Ten.
Yeah, the, the minimum we have here is forty-four for the, for the tank itself, between, between the, the gray, the fill and the foam board.
So what is the foam board? The foam board is ten? R-value?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah.
So all these measurements are done off the top of the tank?
They will be, yes.
So, like, I've never seen something like this with an elevation, so, but I guess you can work it that way.
Yeah, just be, we need, we need.
So the top of the tank is elevation zero, and everything's gonna come off of that?
Yeah, well, we've got, what we have is actually, the, the, the tank itself is, you know, we're kinda going off a grade, which is like the road elevation, we kinda started there, and so it's down eighteen inches below that, we had to keep it, we had to keep it up, we had to keep it up because of the water table, and then, so we're, then we're building, basically, we're building the fill on top of that.
But that's not what I'm talking about. The top of the tank is gonna be what, all these measurements are gonna be taken from?
That is correct.
I don't understand how you follow the top of these grades without elevation grades, like from the road, or?
We have, so basically, the baseline will be from the road, and then, and then the top of the tank is shot from the road.
I look to those with, with background in this, I, I am not qualified to ask significant questions, I must admit. That's why we have a code enforcement officer and a fire chief, and, you know, people on the board who understand it better than I do. So he's basically describing, describing the plan, Emo, and Darrell had a question. Darrell, would you like to repeat your question for Emo, please?
Well, so you were concerned about the pipe being the right height, correct?
Yeah.
So I don't see any grades on here, so I was just, if you looked at this and figured out how you're gonna.
Sorry.
That's fine.
I see a three percent grade on, what?
So here's the elevation.
Yeah.
Right? So we've got, what we currently have is we've got this three percent slope, right?
Right.
So this plan view and this elevation view line up.
Yeah.
And so we have three feet from the road.
Right, if, if you look on that same.
To the fill pipe.
I'm not talking about the grade of the, of the incline of the ramp, I'm talking about how you get all this stuff in to match exactly like it is here. Where's the zero elevation? So, in order to put this in, you're gonna have to have something to measure by. Either the top of the tank, all, all this comes off the top of the tank, could all come from the road if you had elevations. I don't see how you hold anybody to this without elevations.
Look, if you need, what I can do, okay, is I can put a dimension on here that goes from the fill pipe to the road, and basically shows you from, from the edge of the road to the fill pipe. I mean, it's gonna be three foot, it's gonna be, if that's a three percent slope, if that's a three percent slope.
Look, I'm not trying to make it happy, what I'm saying is, you get this all in, and then it doesn't work. If, if you added elevations on this to tell the height of everything, I mean, you could do it off the top of the tank with the measurements, I guess, but you can't put all this in off a picture without some, something to start from. Zero elevation would have to be either the tank or the road.
Like, I, I just said, we can pull an elevation from the edge of the road to the top of the tank.
So you were concerned about the pipe, that it was too high?
Yeah, I mean.
So how do you know the new pipe is the right height without an elevation from where the pipe's coming out to the top?
So, all I can go by, I'm certainly not an engineer, but it's on that picture that's showing the three percent slope, it's showing a three foot.
Which number is that, Emo? Which number of page? S-one?
S-one on the lower left.
Okay, S-one on the lower left.
If you look next to the, the drawing of the truck, it's showing a three, three-foot measurement.
Yes.
And then if you go to the right, there's the pipe there, so.
But what, where do you get the measurements from? Are they all coming from the top of the tank, or?
Well, what, whatever, to me, I, again, I'm no professional here, but to me, whatever they set this, this level at, the, the apron level at, from there up needs to be where the top of that pipe is at approximately three feet. So however they get that, it doesn't matter to me, but they just need to make sure that's what it is at the end. So, the, by ordinance, they have to have at least the eighteen inches of the appropriate material. If they put in twenty-four, I don't care, right, as long as it's compacted right and gives me that, that right level for that pipe connection.
So Darrell, are you asking for more detail on the plan, as like, for contour line?
I was just trying to get it so that it would be put in one time instead of two or three times.
Hmm.
I mean, if you got elevations, I mean, I, if, if this was all done off the top of the tank, I, I think you're right, but I don't see anything here that's said so. I mean, it's not what I'd like to work by if I was doing it. I want elevation so I know that I'm doing everything according to the print, because if they do all this and then it's not right, they're gonna have to do it over again. I don't, you know, from, from what I looked at up there, it's pretty hard for me to see a three percent grade on that.
I'm sorry? That's three percent on the drawing, is that what you're asking?
Well, I mean, from the road to the, to the, from the top of the tank to the road, from the road to the end of the slab or, or the ramp, is only a three percent grade?
Yeah, it's three, three inches over a hundred inches, right? That's three percent.
Yeah. But it's a thirty-foot, I don't know.
Right, if it's thirty-eight feet, right? If it's thirty, if it's almost, if it's almost.
But you don't have any grade on from the road.
In other words, he's telling you that you're not showing enough detail for him to determine where you're measuring your, your.
And what I said was, if you need, I can pull a dimension from the edge of the road to the top of the tank.
I think that's what he's asking for, right, Darrell?
Right.
Yeah.
Why don't you just do it at zero elevation and do elevations on this? That'd be the easiest way to do it. In other words, that.
That's fine.
The road is zero elevation, the top of this is minus eight or something like that?
They've all accomplished the same thing, so that's fine.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, if you, if you say that all these measurements are taken off the top of the tank, because it looks like they are, but that's all I'm asking, where do you, where do you get all the measurements in the height from? I mean, it's, I was just trying to get it so it would be a lot easier.
Yeah, ultimately, you know, what you want is, you just wanna make sure that the tank is oriented from the road, you wanna make sure that the dimension from, it's basically the, the end of the road, the elevation in the road, there just needs to be dimension to the top of the tank, and everything else is tied in.
Well, I mean, if, if it's, if all these measurements equal a three percent grade, I guess you've got it all. I don't believe it does, but that's my opinion. I don't see how I can figure it out without having an elevation, at least from here to here in the top of the tank. How, where do you start from if you don't have an elevation? I mean, I don't, the tank, is that what, is that what you're saying? You started from the tank?
According to this drawing, from the edge of the road, as we, as we grade this back thirty-five feet at a three percent slope, when we get to the infill pipe, the infill pipe will be three feet below, or excuse me, three feet above the ramp. So, that's what, that's what this drawing shows that we are going to make sure of, which is what the fire chief says he needs.
So everything is based off the top of the tank?
That's correct. The ramp has to be based off the top of the tank. Because ultimately, it's, the truck just needs to, you know, the, the pipe, the pipe just needs to be three feet, you know, from, from, from the, from the ramp at that location. It's all laid out here, it's just a matter, it's all laid out here. It's just a matter of pulling, it's just a matter of giving you another dimension so that you can see that, you know, if that's a three percent slope and that's three inches every hundred inches, if I were to scale this and say, okay, well, from the road to the infill pipe, we're probably talking about twenty feet. So that's, you know, that's point two, so what's that, three inches? So basically, from the road to the infill pipe, we've gone up about three inches. And so therefore, from the road to the top of the tank is about three point, is about three feet, three inches. So I'm gonna put a dimension on the drawing that says, you know, from, from the elevation of the road to the top of the tank is three feet, three inches. That means that at the tank, at the infill pipe, it's, it's with the ramp, it's three feet from the infill pipe.
So they used the, the truck to come up with all that? Or you just gave them that three feet?
Yeah, so when, I actually went over there myself and took one of our trucks and drove it in, just to, to be able to show, one of the times I presented, the difference to show why it, why it wouldn't work. But basically, that pipe on the truck is about hip lever. But you have a ten-foot length of hose that has some flexibility to it. So it didn't have to be an exact measurement, as long as we can get within the ten feet for that, that pipe to work, and then we can hook to the truck. And the pipe, the fill pipe still has to be cut down. So if, if they do that apron first and get the, the surface level, they can measure up to, to where that pipe needs to come out and cut that down, do the ninety-degree and send it out, so it'll be at the right height when it's done.
So if that doesn't come out to a three percent grade, does that bother you any?
It doesn't bother me at all.
So you're gonna be working with them to put this thing in?
Uh, if I have to.
Well, who's gonna take the responsibility?
Well, Craig is the code officer, and Craig and fire chief have been sort of-
Excuse me?
Hasn't it been Craig and, Craig and the fire chief have been working together on this or...
The, the bottom line is that they can do whatever they want as long as the end result meets what the, the ordinance says, right? The ordinance says it has to have at least eighteen inches of the right base at ninety-five proctor. I said I need it long enough for the truck to be able to fit in and line up to the fill pipe, and then I need that pipe to be at the right elevation to be able to connect to it. So, had the, had the tank been set as low as it should've been, wouldn't be a problem at all, right? So now they're, they're gonna modify that. And when I go over there with a truck and wanna hook up, I better be able to do it or I'm not signing off on the cistern.
Well, that's what I was trying to avoid.
Right. But...
So if I know if this was laid out... To me, if this, if this was, I mean, I can see how you could probably make this work. You still have to do elevations. But I would, I mean, I was, elevations is how you build things. Without elevations, why do you, I mean, you're using the road, but I don't know why you didn't do a few elevations on this to prove you could actually do it this way. But if you guys are working with it, well, it's gonna all right.
So before final sign-off, EMO, you would do a test run if I can comment?
Yeah, because we haven't even been able to pump from it yet 'cause we can't reach the pipe, so... I mean, we know it's not leaking 'cause we filled it up over a year ago now, I think. So it's holding water just fine. But we haven't been able to test to make sure that we can actually draft from it. And I, I do wanna make sure once they cut the pipe that it is welded up tight so that we don't have leaks. So it'll be very important to, to draft from it once we can get to it.
So you will check them at each stage?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Well...
I don't know that I-
I'm not gonna hold up anything without elevations, but that's up to you.
I, I, I don't, I, I hear some concerns that if you would come back with some elevation points to satisfy members of the planning board before they're willing to vote positively on this, just to address the concerns that have been expressed here tonight.
Yeah, I can, I can write the dimension on here tonight.
Well, no, he's talking about showing elevations, from what I understand.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And, and it would, and writing it on tonight isn't going to work, I don't think.
How would you do that tonight?
I have my computer with me. We, we shot the elevation of this tank from the road like a month ago. So, so on my, I'm so-
So it would've been easier just to put that on there and then that, that would've solved everything?
What's that?
I guess he's asking why you didn't put that on there when you-
It was just a dimension, it was just a dimension that was missed. So I, I could've said, I mean, it's, I can, I can pull that dimension and I can get it on there.
Okay. I think that would satisfy your concerns right now, if you did that.
You'd have something to work from, that's all I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, the drawing's accurate, it's just missing one dimension.
Oh, I don't doubt that the drawing is.
The drawing's ac- all I need to do is if I get you an elevation from the edge of the road to the top of the tank, then it ties in everything else. So...
Okay.
And we went and we shot that and we made sure exactly that, that where the elevation that tank is according to the edge of the road is, so on the, you know, in the, in the CAD drawing, it's accurate. It's just, you're just looking for what, you're basically just looking for a dimension to tie the elevation of the road to the rest of the dimensions.
I mean, you're an engineer, if you were to put this out for bid, I mean, you would've put elevations on it, right? I mean, how are you gonna build it without an elevation?
I just said I could, I can get you a dimension.
Yeah, okay, well, that's it. You're going to come back with a plan that shows the elevation for the board, okay?
Yep.
Any other concerns? Any questions that you might have, EMO, anymore? Okay, Craig? Okay?
Thank you.
We're clear? Thank you very much.
Can we, if we get that to you guys like tomorrow, do we have to wait another month for another meeting?
Um, tomorrow, we meet again the third Monday of, of May of... I, I don't know what that day is. Does someone have a calendar they can...
Twentieth.
Twentieth?
I believe that's correct, yeah. It'll take them five minutes to do the work and we'll have to wait three weeks to come back.
Well, if, Darrell, if they get a plan in tomorrow that Craig and EMO are satisfied with, with the dimensional drawings on it-
Well, you don't have to dissatisfy me, I mean, that's-
Well, no, this is, you're a member of the board and you know more than any of us do. I mean, I could not, I'm not an engineer, I can't do that, yeah.
He's an engineer.
So what I'm asking you is if he brings in a plan tomorrow, will the elevation-
No, stop me. I, I don't wanna hold it up.
So, so we could vote tonight with a condition?
Yep.
All right.
All right, that'd be great, yeah.
So...
That would make sense.
Is there a motion to accept the cistern plan for Taylor subdivision with the condition that it will not be enforced... Is enforced the right word? Until the fire chief and the code enforcement officer see and accept a plan that shows the elevations. Am I wording that correctly? Okay?
Could you say that again, Joyce? I didn't quite get everything.
Can you hear it on tape?
Would you like me to make the question?
Yes.
Um, so I motion that we accept the Taylor cistern with the condition that they add the elevation to the plan and with that condition met and okayed by the fire chief and the code enforcement officer, that it will be accepted.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Did Darrell second it? All in favor? Unanimous, okay.
Who seconded that?
Darrell did.
Darrell? All in favor?
Yes. Okay?
Thank you, guys, I'll get that to you as soon as possible.
Okay, very good. All right, let's get back to the bullet points here. So basically, the changes in the zoning ordinance on the referendum question will... A lot of it is just correcting typos and references so that they coordinate property. It, when we approve an application, there's a notice of decision that is written and that includes the conditions for the approval of whatever the application is. And there is some formal wording that, how it needs to go in, some of which the town attorney told us to put in. So this just clarifies that for the applicant, everything in here is to ensure that when the applicant comes in, there's a clear understanding of what they should be doing. So there's no question of, well, you didn't tell me that or the ordinance didn't say that or whatever. It makes Craig's life easier, it makes the planning boards and the applicant's life easier. One of the other corrections is that under the land use table, which tells you whether you have to come before the planning board, the code enforcement officer or whatever for approval, the, the line of, under medical marijuana production, it says the code enforcement officer has the final approval. That has to be changed to the planning board because it's a conditional use permit and the code enforcement officer cannot issue conditional use permits. And basically, bottom line, it brings the ordinance, the, that section of the ordinance into compliance with state law. So the next referendum question, the second one, will be shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled Extractive Industry be enacted? And once again, anyone who wants to see the complete language of any of these, they're available through the front office. So feel free to, if you want further clarification of the bullet points, you can definitely go in and see that language. I think one of the more important things to emphasize here under the extraction industry is that all existing pits are grandfathered, which means they do not have to meet the changes that we're proposing unless they expand their operation or they open a new pit. And it's important also to note for the, several people in town who have smaller pits, these requirements do not, these new requirements will not apply to them unless they expand their pits and they have to comply with the EP requirements. And, and I think everybody knows that we're not out to close down small pits. We're here to ensure that the larger pits, and if you reach a larger stage, that, that the conditions basically protect the town. It clarifies the reclamation standards for when a, when a pit closes down, what has to be done to bring the land back to its original condition. It requires the plans to be drawn by a licensed main professional engineer. We've found there have been mistakes when that requirement hasn't been in effect and we're changing that. It clarifies the language so that everyone knows what the setbacks are for like buffer strips, what the conditions are for lighting, for the rehab of the pit, as I said. It clarifies that with the number of feet in, if, in circumstances where it applies. It requires the location of seasonal high water table using borings and test pits. We haven't done that and there's some issues revolving that. One of the, it requires, it requires a hydrological study for all new or expanding pits. And currently, the language says may. And with the change of the seasonal rains and the climate conditions that are changing, it was felt that any newer expanding pits, they really need to have a hydro study to determine the impact. It deter- it determines the distance that has to be maintained, clearly defines the distance that has to be maintained between a well and the water supply. There also requires a performance guarantee that's acceptable to the select board. The planning board do not deal with money issues, they, that goes through the select board. And it increases the necessary liability insurance required from a million to two million dollars. Prices are not the same as they were when this ordinance was written back in the eighties. So that's just an overview of the extraction. If you, anybody wants the exact language, these are the high points. You can find the exact language as it relates to each of those high points if you, if you want to do that. Excuse me, the next one is the third referendum question. Shall an amendment to the subdivision ordinance entitled Fire Protection Public Safety be enacted? And this was written with EMO. And basically, it clarifies the distance needed between buildings and water supply. It, it eliminates some contradictions in the ordinance. There was an instance where in one point it said fifteen thousand feet and then another it said twelve, and it just straightens that all out. It clarifies the language as to the meaning of certain procedures and it further protects the town from liability. That is extremely important. You've just heard a discussion on cisterns, excuse me, cisterns. And this very definitely clarifies how, how the construction of cisterns should be handled. And it's very much needed, as you can hear from what went in, with the conversation part of what went on earlier tonight. It ensures proper inspection by the fire chief and the code enforcement officer. They had a few may's and a maybes and some elimination, but you really need to have both those men or women, if they should be in the position, have final approval over those plans. And it defines responsibility for the maintenance of cisterns or dry hydrants in subdivisions by a homeowners association. Once again, that language is available in Patty and Bev's office. The next referendum question, shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled Flood Plane Management be enacted? And this is a FEMA mandated. And I, I hope people take this seriously because it couldn't have some serious impact on the town if this is not voted in. The towns, all towns, whether it be Lymington or any other town, if their current FEMA, if their current flood plane ordinances don't comply, they have to adopt the new flood plane language by July seventeenth of this year. If the town or any town decides not to adopt it, there will be no FEMA insurance policies issued in town. And we currently have six families that are fall within that. If the town decides not to accept it, existing policies will stay in effect, but once they're expired, they will not be renewed. And the, one of the most significant ones for the impact on the town will be that there would be no FEMA monies for any storm damage. There would be no reimbursement from FEMA for any storm damage that might occur in town. And we all know what these last couple of storms this, this year have, have created for the town. That would be disastrous. And, and it also could affect future home sales in, in the town. So I think people need to understand the seriousness of that and, and hopefully understand and vote positively. And the last referendum question will be shall an amendment to the zoning ordinance entitled LD 2003 be enacted? And this is the, once again, this is state mandated. And once again, towns must adopt it by the middle of July. And Lymington is a town that does not have sewage or public water, so we're not really deeply affected by this. But what it does do, it allows up to three dwelling units per lot. And these could be your own house that you live in right now. You could add an accessory unit, which would be like an iller apartment type of thing, and another house. If you're adding another separate house, you would need to double the lot size in your zone. And if you're in a three acre zone, it would be six acres. But you would not have to have the frontage requirement that your original house had. And you could have a driveway that would connect, the, the existing driveway could connect, you know, to your current house and then could connect to the, to the separate house. If you own ten or fifteen acres or whatever, you do not have to double that. It's just whatever the required zoning land, land acreage is in your zone. But you would have to meet setback requirements, which if you have that big a lot, shouldn't be difficult. And it also allows for tiny homes. Now, the, under the first one of the zoning ordinance, there's definitions and tells you- you what a tiny home would be. It just adds tiny homes, and the changes, like, in one place it said accessory apartments, well, that wording is changed to accessory dwelling units. So it just brings the language in the ordinance into compliance with the language of LD 2003. Let me just see if I'm missing anything here. And at one point, it just says that the main universal building in Energy Code, which is MUBACT, is hereby adopted and shall be adhered to for all building and electrical permits issued. And that's an existent anyway, it's a state law. It just lets the applicant know that, hey, guys, you know, this is a requirement. So if you're dealing with an engineer, he should look at the MUBACT policy and make sure, you know, you're in compliance with that. It's standard operating procedure, but once again, it just highlights it in the ordinance, and reminds the applicant that they have to. So, bottom line, that's what our referendum questions are. We ask for your support. We ask if you have any, any, any questions at all, you can call any of us at any time. We'd be more than glad to answer them, even meet you at town hall if you want, and go over the exact language that's available out there. We've already held our public hearing, and like I said, the Selectmen will be holding their informational, and theirs is an informational public hearing at the end of May. There cannot be any changes to this language at this point in time, because they've all, we've already had the public hearing, and they have to go forward, and the town either votes them up or down. So basically, what we're doing right now is trying to educate people, to inform people, let you know that we're here, if you wanna ask us questions, and hope you come to the Selectmen's informational meeting, if you want, okay? So that's it for the referendum questions. The other things I have for the board, everybody got a copy of these. What I did, two guys, was the original bullet points that I sent out were in a different order, and Patty and I agreed that the bullets, the order of the bullet points should coordinate with the order of the referendum questions. I think that we need to decide when this should go in the shopper's guide, and also it should be posted, I think, on Facebook, and maybe even, I'm talking about the bullet points now, should be posted on Facebook, and it wouldn't even do any harm to, if somebody wanted to post them on the community, what is it called, the community forum page? Is that, am I using the right language there? Limington Community Open Forum, is that what it's called? Yeah. So, is there anyone on the board that would be willing to do that?
I can do that.
Would you? Okay, all right.
You want this...
The bullet points.
Bullet points document on this two Limington Facebook sites.
Okay, both of them would be great. Now, does the board believe the special town meeting is June eleventh? So there's probably a shopper's guide that comes out. Should we do it just the week before, or two weeks before? It's a fairly big ad to go in the paper.
I think two weeks.
What do you think? Do it, yeah?
Well, if you did it two weeks, you'd probably wanna do it both.
No, I don't mean advertise two weeks. Have one ad appear...
Two weeks before.
If we...
You mean two weeks before, or one week before?
I'm thinking two, because it would just come out, and be out two or three days, and then they'd be voting.
No, 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 we vote on a Tuesday.
And it comes out on a Wednesday.
So it would come out the Wednesday before, so it would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Well, that probably would be...
There would be five days.
I think the week before.
Yeah.
Because people forget that.
The Wednesday before the vote, yes.
Joyce, other question, you able to drop the one that we weren't gonna run?
No. That has to go on and be voted in, but it cannot be employed.
So that's gonna be, we're just not gonna do any bullet points on it?
Right, because it's, yeah, yeah.
So that'll be June fifth?
Is it June fifth?
It'll come out June fifth.
Come out on the June fifth.
June fifth.
Which means it'll need to be in.
Yeah, yeah. And, so, thanks, that's...
I have another question in relation to that, Joyce. This is a pretty big document.
Yeah.
That's gonna take a lot of the page.
It may take a full page, I don't care.
It's very expensive.
It may take a half, I don't care.
Okay.
How much is a full page now?
I wanna say fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred.
It should be two hundred bucks.
I think front page is...
Well, you can, you can, you can use a smaller font.
Yeah, shrink it down.
You, you know, if you want, I'll be glad to go over and work with them, or you move them.
I think it definitely should be half a page.
Yeah, I agree.
So what's the, what's the front page now?
I think the front page is twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's too much.
I'll say that when other towns have done this, they've done full pages, and it really has an impact, you really need it. So I think you just need to make sure that it's not too short, too.
Yeah, no, everything's just...
They're too small, they can't read.
We want it to show up.
Yeah, so whatever, I mean, we need...
Okay.
We need to, our, one of our goals is to educate people, to get the information out, and if we're gonna do that, it's gonna cost some money, so let's just go ahead and do it. The other thing I wanted to bring up, that Craig had a woman who wanted to, she lives out of town, correct me if I say anything wrong here, Craig, and she wanted to buy a house and do short-term vacation rentals. And so I, Craig called, and we talked about it, and I called Ben, the town attorney. And we have nothing in our language that refers to Airbnb, we have nothing that refers to short-term rentals. The only thing in there is that, like, if you have a camper or a trailer in your yard, someone can only live in it for a hundred and eighty days, I think it is. So, do we need to have Airbnb language, since that seems to be an up-and-coming thing? Is it, what does the board feel about that? I don't, I don't even...
I don't think we do.
I, you know, I, I'm amb...
You wanna rent your house, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm ambivalent at this point. I'm not sure what other towns do. We might, if somebody wants to look into what other towns do, and come back and sort of give us an update, and why they did what they did, if they have, you know, did they have an incident that might have, an incident that might have occurred that made them realize they needed to do it? I mean, I, I don't see any, like, this lady harm, if she wants to do short-term rentals.
Most of the cities have done it, is to cut down to have more monthly rentals, is what they do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They must have to follow fire codes, I would think.
Emo, is there any, if somebody wants, because Airbnbs are usually like week or two-week kinds of things, aren't they? I mean, they're not...
Even the weekends.
I mean, it can be, usually there's a two-night minimum, if you look online or anything, but Airbnb, and I forget the other one, but I'm pretty sure they regulate pretty good. Like, if you go through...
You have to be registered with the Airbnb company, or...
Yeah, so you do your reservations through those companies.
And do they do the home inspections, and check out the houses before they rent them?
I don't know how they do it, I've never, Airbnb, well, I've rented, but I haven't put anything on. I think it's a great idea. I think, to Darrell's point, they do it in the cities, because they want more long-term housing, and then, of course, they wanna be able to charge for permits and tax at different rates and everything else. So I think if somebody owns a home, if they do a monthly rental, long-term, or they do it a weekend, it's all the same.
Well, if you do it long-term, they'd be considered, that might fall under the LD 2003.
Right, but as far as, you know, our ordinances, we don't make them come in and get a permit to have rental properties, right? Like Martel, for instance, right? He has a lot of properties in town.
He has apartment buildings.
Right.
But all you have to do is come in before the board, when you're building your apartment building, to make sure that you meet the codes and you have the proper parking. But once the building is up, you can rent.
Right.
Whatever.
Right, so I mean, I would say it's the same thing, personally, but...
Okay. Well, if any member of the board has concerns about that, and they wanna do some homework, please feel free.
Just one question.
Sure.
The, I was reading a...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Pete's talking. What?
I was reading an article.
Put the mic.
I believe it, I was reading an article, I believe it came from California, where someone bought a house. When they went to inspect something, there was fifteen families living in it.
I saw it. What?
Fifteen fam, a family went to buy a house, and when they went to take charge of it, or whatever, they found fifteen families living in it, or something.
You're talking about the transients that move into vacant houses?
Yeah.
Well, no, this one house wasn't vacant, this person bought the house, and he was charging them, there was fifteen people in it.
So the, so the original owner was actually letting all these people live in it?
You'll find that in the area. Maybe not Limington, but I've heard stories of that. People that may not be native to America.
Well, they don't have to, it can be native or not, if the landlord wants to...
But they bring family over, once they find a place, and they just cram them in. But there's no way to know, right? Until you go there for an incident or something, and then, all of a sudden, you know.
Well, it just happened, this one here, somebody developed tuberculosis.
Oh, yeah.
And then, of course, they helped pop it in.
Yes, yeah.
How'd you get him out?
All right.
Who wants him?
I guess, bottom line...
California as an example, unless you wanna use it as a bad one.
Emo said, don't use California as an example, unless you wanna use them as a bad one. I don't have anything else. I think I've covered everything that's in here. Anybody else have anything? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Fifteen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Grace seconded, all in paper. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.